To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, moving into our presentations, item number one is the Law Enforcement United's Rough Ride. We have Mr. Scott Humphrey, welcome, please.
President Shade, Commissioner Brody, Commissioner Caprere, County Administrator Butler, County Attorney Rudd, members of Allegheny County community. When a police officer is killed in the line of duty, it is not an agency that loses an officer, it's an entire nation. Thank you for inviting me to speak before you this evening to highlight the service and sacrifice of our nation's law enforcement officers. My name is Scott Humphrey, I'm a police lieutenant with the City of Virginia Beach Police Department, where I have served for the past 26 years. I am a founding member of Law Enforcement United and a division president of Law Enforcement United. I am joined by other members of our leadership team and members of our organization. The mission of our organization is to honor the fallen and remember the survivors. We accomplish this mission through an annual bicycle ride that we refer to as the Road to Hope. Starting in St. Louis, Missouri, Raleigh, North Carolina, Reading, Pennsylvania, Chesapeake and Roanoke, Virginia, Atlantic City, New Jersey, and right here in Allegheny County, Cumberland, Maryland, law enforcement officers and surviving family members from around the nation raise money throughout the year to participate in this annual event. By May 10th, all routes are underway bicycling towards Washington, DC, where we will eventually converge and arrive as one team on May 12th. Once we come together, we make our annual fundraising presentation, which over the past 10 years has exceeded $5 million. This money is given to our three partners, the concerns of police survivors, to provide support to the survivors whose lives were shattered with the loss of their law enforcement loved one. The Officer Down Memorial Page, which is committed to memorializing every officer killed and conducting historical research to reveal others forgotten in time. And the Spirit of Blue Foundation, which provides training and equipment to ill-funded agencies better protecting our officers and our communities. One unique thing about our organization is that it is made up entirely of volunteers. We have absolutely no paid staff. We are proud to do what we do without compensation or reward. In 2018, 163 law enforcement officers and 25 law enforcement canines died in the line of duty. Among these was 29-year-old Baltimore County Police Officer Amy Caprio, who was intentionally struck with a vehicle and killed after responding to a burglary in progress call. Her husband, Tim, is with us here in Cumberland to begin his journey to Washington, DC, and here is his wife's name read aloud before tens of thousands of officers from around the world, and officially dedicated to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. Her name will be one of 21,909 others, including Cumberland Patrolman August Baker, etched into the blue-gray marble limestone walls of the national memorial. Sadly, this memorial is one that will never be completed, as new names are added every year. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution in Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. I respectfully ask the residents and businesses of this beautiful Allegheny County to honor our nation's law enforcement by remembering to lower the flag of the United States of America to half-staff on May 15th, Peace Officers Memorial Day in accordance with public law. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Mr. Trump, please, and everyone associated, please come one up front.
Please.
Thank you.
Yeah, I absolutely.
And everyone gets an Allegheny County pin you can take with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just go ahead and fill in.
Some kind of...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just go ahead and fill in.
Some kind of...
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like you're up to the task of the...
I think so.
We have an official citation tonight, and it reads, "The Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County welcomes and commends all participants in supporting the Law Enforcement United's Rough Ride from Cumberland, Maryland to Washington, DC. Law Enforcement United, 100% volunteer organization, strives to honor the service and sacrifice of all law enforcement officers and canines killed in the line of duty and remember the survivors left behind, as presented by the Board of County Commissioners this ninth day of May 2019." And that's signed all three county commissioners, Creed Brody, Dave Caprere, and Jake Shade. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner, before...
Sir.
Gonna get in there?
The gentleman in the green scan forward. Commissioner Shade behind him.
There you go.
We'll figure it out.
That's it.
Figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brody, a little bit closer.
Oh.
We don't like... Thank you.
Now, before everyone moves, please stay still for just a second.
I blanked.
Because I know there was someone here, I would really like, that would support your group wholeheartedly, triple the one if you would, please. Come up here and get your picture taken. It's triple the one, say please.
We got a little fight for you, sir.
I was wanting to move in the audience, I wasn't gonna say it.
Well, we can get anybody excited.
There you go.
And his wife is Allegheny County Teacher of the Year, that is the reason for his presence.
Oh, very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did everyone get a pin?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
We'd like to stay in for the Teacher of the Year presentation.
Absolutely. We have Mrs. Sarah Llewellyn, please come one up.
I got in the middle here.
Good to see you.
Okay. This is an official citation from the Board of County Commissioners, and it congratulates and commends Sarah Dawn Llewellyn as her selection as Allegheny County Teacher of the Year 2019-2020, and that's presented by the Board of County Commissioners Creed Brody, Dave Caprere, and Jake Shade. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now, would you like a picture with your husband or son?
That's okay.
You sure?
I don't think he realized that he was getting a picture taken already, same thing. That was a surprise. Thank you. We think it's going to come. Thank you very much.
If you want to make it your mark, you're welcome to, if not...
I appreciate the remembrance.
And we do have something small for you.
Well, you didn't do that. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
All right. Item number three is our five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. DeWitt. Dan, you cleared everyone out.
Pardon me.
Oh.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan DeWitt, I'm county engineer, serving tonight as capital improvement program engineer, here to present Allegheny County's capital improvement program for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. I'm sure you all are familiar, but in case anyone here is not familiar, every year the county updates its five-year capital improvement program to help get a better idea of upcoming large expenditures and other projects across a variety of agencies throughout the county to make sure that we are appropriately planning for fiscal needs down the road for all the agencies who've come to the county for funding. So this year is no exception, as I'm going to show here briefly and talk about some of the projects that have been submitted to the county for consideration. A capital project by definition is any project with a estimated cost greater than $25,000 with a life expectancy exceeding 10 years. Okay, so this isn't for a new lawnmower, it's for a new bridge, it's for a new roof on a school, internet systems, things like that, that are large capital expenditures. This process for this past year started in January, a few months ago. We solicit our various county departments and agencies for capital project requests. We receive them, put them into a program that we use each year, and then meet a few times internally with county staff to talk about the projects and make recommendations to the commissioners for approval, which is where we are here this evening. The committee members are made up generally of department heads of the various agencies in the county. The voting members on the committee are listed there, Administrator Butler, Director Public Works, Paul Cale, Director of Finance, Jason Bennett, myself, and also Director of Economic and Community Development, Jeff Parkland. This is the final version of the document that we have put together requesting approval from the commissioners, and barring any changes or anything unforeseen at this point, we would be scheduled for adoption of this document along with the budget on May 30th here in three weeks. So at this point, we have, I know this may be a little bit hard to read there, if anybody has any questions, I'm going to just briefly read each of the projects, and if it has money requested for fiscal year 2020, those are the ones that are generally of concern because that's a fiscal impact for the coming year. If it is not requested until a future year, then we still list it, but it's not as of immediate concern because it doesn't require any outlay for this coming year. For Allegheny College, we have four projects, the technologies building, the second phase of that project is underway in design and will be continuing for the next several years. The WCI Institute building is also underway and looking to be built to help continue some of the training programs for correctional officers, as well as house some continuing ed programs for college at AC. The next project there, roof replacement, is an ongoing preventative maintenance program to help take care of the roofs on the various AC buildings, and there's a new project on AC's radar for this year, the Wilbrook Outdoor Wellness Center, which some of you may have heard about. It's going to be a very robust facility incorporating a lot of new fields, walking tracks, facilities, taking advantage of nearby property at the college, looking for a lot of grant funding on that, which is underway. If you notice there on the far right, if it's listed as having no AC money, that means that the county is, although involved in the project, it's not requiring a direct county contribution in cash. It may be we're involved through staff time or other ways to help make the project go, but the funding for the project is not dependent on the county providing a direct infusion. Okay? Moving on to the next agency, county fairgrounds. A future project for the county may, the county fairgrounds would be the development of an access road, provide an additional way in and way out for events, and also this year we'll be using some open space money to build some bathrooms on the north end of the fairgrounds through the use of our maintenance staff here in-house. If you have any questions as I'm going, please feel free to stop me, otherwise I'm going to keep going. The next list, there are several projects submitted to us from the Board of Education. Each year we have the ability to fund one or more of these projects, depending on how much has been requested, and depending on the participation they receive from the state as far as matching funding. Typically, these are 90-10 projects with the state providing the majority of the funding, and the county here contributing the local share. Majority of them are roof replacements. I'm just going to read down the list here. Roof replacement at Western Port Elementary, windows and doors at Westside Elementary, roof replacement at Bel Air Elementary, replacement at Northeast Elementary, roof replacement in two phases at the Career Center, paving and sidewalks for both Braddock and Washington Middle, apparent drop-off area, as well as some paving work at Frost Elementary, gymnasium addition at Northeast Elementary, boiler replacement at Washington Middle, continuing on to the next page, boiler replacement also at Braddock Middle and at Fort Hill, new windows and doors for Bell Elementary, pedestrian bridge for Bel Air Elementary, and roof replacements for both Georges Creek and John Humbert. These projects are submitted to us from Vince Montana, the Director of Facilities, from the Board of Education, and works with the county closely to make sure that our planned availability to be able to support those projects lines up with their needs, and these change year to year. Sometimes they get new projects added, like the two new roof projects, but these are generally the format that we see. There's nothing newer with a very high price tag on this list at this time. Moving on to the Department of Public Works, the Department of Public Works requests are broken down into several departments, the buildings, flood mitigation, roads and bridges, water, sewer, transit, things like that. For under buildings, we had initially tried to develop a new restroom facility for the depot in Frostburg, and if funding becomes available in the future, we may try to pursue that again. That's not planned for this year. There are some various improvements, the next three there to the county office complex and our Cumberland Roads Garage here, through some parking line improvements and heating and window improvements to our roads garage. The detention center is looking for some HVAC improvements, which is already underway. Currently under construction is the development of a permanent transportation exhibit at the Allegheny Museum, not requiring any county funding, but we are helping to facilitate the project on the first floor of the new renovation over there at the Allegheny Museum. A new roof at the Tool House in Lavelle is being developed as well, a new chiller at the courthouse annex, a new roof on Building 74, which is one of the old buildings of the county facility back here, which houses a lot of our storage and currently houses the election board, looking for new paint at the Frostburg Depot, and HVAC upgrade at the Brook Building over at the Health Department. Flood mitigation projects, these are not requiring any county cash, just involving staff time to help us meet our goals for the Chesapeake Bay TMDO. We were pursuing grant funding from DNR, and the first project there in Shaft is a stream restoration project, receiving some funding from the abandoned mine lands division of Department of the Environment as well, and the second one there also in Georges Creek areas to try to repair a failing stream bank near Georges Creek Elementary School to protect a home and county road and other assets. Moving on to roads and bridges, I'm not going to read all of these, but these are various county bridges that are either in, you know, going to be replaced by county forces, they're going to be replaced by contractors, or through our federal bridge program, some of which can be completed quickly, some of which take several years. So we are taking available funding made, given to the Department of Public Works and trying to prioritize these bridge projects so that we are never in a situation where we have a bridge that is out of service, trying to be proactive as opposed to reactive in our maintenance. The funding for these projects accomplished generally through bond issues and/or the roads budget. We're able to make a lot of good use of our roads division employees who have a variety of skill sets that allow us to accomplish these replacement projects in-house, saving usually up to 50% of the anticipated construction costs, and fortunately, we also have a lot of capable local contractors who can also complete a lot of projects simultaneously with our roads crews so that we can kind of make the best use of our dollars and not get behind on any of our bridge needs. The second page here is a few more bridge projects. We are in the process of finishing up the first phase of the Bowling Green and Crescent Town Drainage Repair Project, looking for funding from State Highway for a second phase, hopefully later this fall or next year, depending on funding availability, in the process of procuring a site and developing plans for a new roads garage and waste disposal site in Old Town. The next project there has been in the news recently, trying to provide some funding for folks who live on OP roads, other public roads, who do not otherwise receive county maintenance, but it's still considered a public road, of which we have approximately 250 miles in the county, providing funding assistance to these folks through a 50-50 cost-sharing split to allow them to do upgrades, paving projects, drainage improvements to the roadways as necessary to improve their situation, given the inability for the county to assume 250 more miles of roads into our maintenance. The truck purchase is an ongoing program for the roads division to provide new trucks each year to keep their fleet up to date. Borden Tunnel off-grid lighting is on the Great Allegheny Passage, using some grant funding to provide some lighting in the currently unlit tunnel, and then the last two there are drainage improvement projects that the county has identified in response to heavy, heavy storms last year and repeated problems that we saw in those specific areas on Grant Road in Crescent Town and in Lower Lavelle on the hillside, where people are receiving just numerous issues that we're going to do our best to try to help them out and establish a solution in the county right away without going on to private property. Moving on, sewer projects here generally, sewer projects for the county are, do not require county funding to implement. We usually are able to accomplish these through combinations of state loans and grants, as well as federal loans and grants through MDE, community development block grant funding, or USDA rural development. The only two exceptions on that list there are the Bowling Green Equipment Garage, which would be a county funding project in the future, and the development of the Mexico Farms Industrial Park, North Branch Pump Station upgrade, which the county used some funding to complete a study, but that will move forward with outside funding as well. The others on the list, Beers Lane Collector Sewer, Bedford Road, Sewer Repairs Phase Six, Holling Sewer, Treatment Plant Upgrades at Old Town in Flintstone, and improvements to the Locust Grove Pump Station in Forest Main, as well as the North Branch Waste Water Treatment Plant Clarifier, will all be pursued using funding from outside agencies and then paid back by users of the system. So they require no direct county cash to make these projects go forward. Transit projects, there are four there on the list. Again, these are similar to a lot of the other projects, generally realized through a combination of state funding, with county providing a small percentage of the project cost for a local match, acquisition of surveillance cameras, cameras, a new passenger facility in the Cumberland area, and then purchase of some buses, as well as what's being planned for coming years in the Department of Public Works Transit Division. Water projects, the only one in the near term to be pursuing, the first steps to Potomac River Water Treatment Plant, which that's not in this year either, it's a future project still under consideration about the best way forward. Water projects are very similar to sewer projects in that they generally do not require county cash to move forward, realized and move forward through a combination of Department of the Environment and USDA funding, as well as community development block grant. Economic Development has three projects on the list there, the second phase of a road rehabilitation project in the North Branch Industrial Park out near Mexico Farms, a future project on the list there, and then the second phase of the Cumberland Chase Development, how long US 220, and the new project on the list this year is Buster Maryland Works in Lower Lavelle there, Maker Space, which Administrator Butler would be able to share more if there's questions on that one, recommending both of those projects for 2020 move forward. If you see RBF there, that's a county fund for revolving building fund, where there's funding made available for economic development projects in the county. Emergency Services is next on the list, we're nearly done, I appreciate you hanging here with me. There are several projects on the list, of which we had discussions with the Department of Emergency Services, asking them to help prioritize their most immediate needs for the coming years, and this is the list that we were provided with. So we are showing new chase vehicle purchases, special operations vehicles, a planned replacement of the CAD system, computer dispatch system, as well as a new ambulance purchase. The other projects on the list there are, for future consideration, a new garage at the 911 Center, pickup truck replacement, and a new gate at 911 Center as well. The Information Technology IT Division is looking at a broadband expansion project to try to take internet to more areas of the county where there's been historically difficulty in receiving that service. There is a large outlay shown there, we are in the process of trying to identify the area where we may most successfully meet our needs and determine if that area would be able to support the project. It's more of a pilot-type study before we move forward with a more large-scale project, which would perhaps encompass a larger portion of that $564,000 figure shown there. The library is our last department to receive funding requests from. We have two projects for the available library, getting ready to undergo a renovation and expansion project, a new heated sidewalk and some roofing repairs at the Frostburg Library, new HVAC at Westport Library, and three projects at the Washington Street Library to help with some roofing, window replacement, and wall and sidewalk restoration. So our grand totals, although some of these projects, as I've mentioned, are in various stages of development, this shows in blue there, the total anticipated county contribution to all of the projects I've discussed here for in prior years, the current year coming up in fiscal 2020, and then moving forward, then you can see in red the total county funding request, as well as the total project request for all of those projects regardless of funding source. I know that was a lot of information, if there's specific questions on any of the projects, I'll be happy to answer them at this point, otherwise I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Dan, and the commissioners have already had a briefing on this, and the press was there as well, so thank you very much for all your work and...
Absolutely.
...getting all these together year after year, because it is a big job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our public hearings, we have fiscal 2020 preliminary budget hearing, Mr. Jason Bennett, Finance Director.
Evening, commissioners. As soon as we can get this thing going. Okay, tonight we have for you our fiscal year 2020 preliminary budget. As you know, we've been working on this budget since January, and tonight would simply be our first hearing on what we now have as the balance budget. So we'll walk through some highlights. First of all, balance budgets, $91,788,864 right now, and some of the revenue highlights you see there in front of you. Property taxes, as we've talked about, are down $442,000 in total. That's really from two sources. First source being our property tax assessments actually came in below constant yield this year, just slightly. So that's one small downturn. The real big hit here we saw was a reduction in our DNR pilot, which was brand-new for us last year. In year two of it, SSTAT changed a bunch of the assessments, and we lost $340,000. So we've taken a pretty big hit there. Thankfully, saving grace right below that is income taxes. As you can see, they're actually up just over $1 million, and that's based on strong current year performance. They're really doing well. Some of that has to do with some of the tax reform at the federal level from a year ago, so we're showing 4% growth for right now. As you look down below, ambulance fees are up just a little bit, $80,000. That's in part because this continues to expand. Getting all these together year after year, because it is a big job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our public hearings, we have fiscal 2020 preliminary budget hearing. Mr. Jason Bennett, Finance Director.
As soon as we can get this thing going. Okay, tonight we have for you our fiscal year 2020 preliminary budget. As you know, we've been working on this budget since January, and tonight would simply be our first hearing on what we now have as the balance budget. So, we'll walk through some highlights. First of all, balance budgets, $91,788,864 right now. And some of the revenue highlights you see there in front of you. Property taxes, as we've talked about, are down $442,000 in total. That's really from two sources. First source being our property tax assessments actually came in below constant yield this year, just slightly. So, that's one small downturn. The real big hit here we saw was a reduction in our DNR pilot, which was brand-new for us last year. In year two of it, S-STAT changed a bunch of the assessments, and we lost $340,000. So, we've taken a pretty big hit there. Thankfully, saving grace right below that is income taxes. As you can see, they're actually up just over $1 million. And that's based on strong current-year performance. They're really doing well. Some of that has to do with some of the tax reform at the federal level from a year ago. So, we're showing 4% growth for right now. As you look down below, ambulance fees are up just a little bit, $80,000. That's in part because this continues to expand and grow on us, and we'll certainly talk about the expenditure side of that here soon. A little bit of a rate spot right below that, unexpendanted fund balance. We're actually using $700,000 less fund balance in this budget than we did last year. Last year, it's actually a little bit of a typo there. We were at $1,571 last year that we used. This year, we're only using $854,000. So, that's good. We're heading in the right direction there. Now, to do the same thing with the expenditures, really not a whole lot of big changes. First one you would see on the list there is salary and fringe benefits for county employees. We did incorporate a 2% COLA into this budget. No health insurance increase. We've been able to hold the cost or hold the line there. We've had just a very slight increase in pensions. So, overall, $155,000 increase. EMS, which we already touched on, has grown this year from last by another $294,000. And it's, as we've talked about many times, the service continues to expand in the area, and we'll have to continue to work to control these costs. Commissioners made a big move in doing that through our work session, as we reduced their request by 20%. So, even after reducing that request 20%, it's still up from last year. So, this is one we'll have to continue to really work on. The next line there, you can see a $410,000 increase to our major outside agencies, pretty much looking at just over a 1% total increase in this budget. In all fairness, we're giving 1% of that increase to a mix of the Board of Ed, Allegheny College, Allegheny County Health Department, and the library. Now, that didn't meet their funding requests, but it's the most fair way to spread our pretty thin resources. The last thing you see there is debt service. It's actually down by half a million dollars. And really, there's one saving grace there is as we issued our bonds at the end of last calendar year, we actually received a premium for those bonds of $862,000. By statute that we adopted, we can only spend that bond premium on debt service. So, we've applied that to first year's debt service. So, in total, it brings us down. That bailed us out this year. Next, quickly, is just a look at our tax rates. And you can see the biggest thing there in red, no change in the rates. So, no rates have moved at all, up or down. Income tax rate is 3.05%. That would actually put us ninth highest in the state. The real property tax rate is unchanged at .9750 per 100. That's actually ninth lowest in the state. We've made a nice move there, where we used to be upper middle of the pack. Now, we're down in the bottom half of all property tax rates in the state. Recordation stayed the same at $3.50, and the homestead credit, which we updated a few years back, is still at 4%. And that costs us roughly $11,000 a year right now. Looking at this next slide here, which is a little busy with a lot of numbers on it, just a pie chart to break down our revenues, and I'll only touch on the major ones. The first one, the big blue section, 46% is real and personal property tax. And really, the only thing to point out here is that used to actually make up more than 50% of our budget. So, the last 10 years have taken their toll on that part of the pie chart. And we've been fortunate, income tax is making up for some of the loss, but nonetheless, we're down below 50%. Income tax, as I mentioned, is up 4%, so it's almost 30% of our budget. Disparity Grant for us has held the last few years, thankfully. And you can see it's almost 10% of our budget there in yellow. Some people think we get a lot of federal and state grants, and really, at the end of the day, it equates to about 2.5% of our budget. So, it's a small piece. And you can see a very, very thin line there, unexpendanted fund balance is less than 1% of our budget. And that's obviously good because you don't want to build your budget using your savings. The biggest thing to point out here is three sources of revenue make up 86% of our budget. So, you're looking at property taxes, income tax, and disparity grants. So, we have to hope they can hold for us. We haven't spent a ton of time on some of these other funds. Our focus tends to be general fund, because the other funds, for the most part, pay for themselves or have another funding source coming in. So, I'll just touch briefly on a few of these. These are all of our funds, except for the Capital Projects Fund, isn't included here yet. And after Dan's presentation tonight, we'll go ahead and get that added in before adoption. So, I'll walk down some of the big things on the list quickly. You can see Rocky Gap there, third one down, is up again just slightly from last year. So, that revenue source for us continues to grow. While the growth naturally is starting to slow a little bit, it's still growing. And we're able to do a lot of good things with those dollars, I think, in the community. As you look down at transit, right below that, $3.8 million. What's really worth pointing out there is, that's $3.8 million. We do that with only $536,000 from our general fund. So, the rest of that is state and federal funded. So, 14% of the funding comes locally. We're able to turn that into nearly $4 million. As you look about the middle of the page, you'll see our revolving building fund. That's our economic fund that we keep for our shell buildings. It continues to do very well for us. It actually pays the bill for economic development and allows us to do some other economic development jobs and projects. So, it continues to be strong for us. Some of the others there, you see, the water and sanitary funds are listed at 12, almost $13 million. Paul Kale is actually going to talk about those funds and their rates here after me, I believe. So, total right now is $129 million here. It'll go up a little bit with our capital projects, but they are all with existing funds we have in place. Next slide, if you had to pick one out of this whole presentation, this is probably our best slide. It's very graphical, and at a quick glance, you can tell what's going on in county government. So, all we did is break down the dollar into how we're spending it. You can see education makes up almost 42% of our budget. That would be between two entities, Allegheny College of Maryland and the Board of Ed. You can see public safety is almost 23% in the middle, kind of greedy yellow. That's actually continuing to grow, just for EMS. A couple of years ago, that was just 20%. So, it continues to tick up on us. With EMS coming more and more towards us, we'll see that continue to grow. And I will note, within that number, we're talking about the Sheriff's Department, they're about $3.4 million. Our detention center at about $7.7 million. EMS is at $3.2 million now. And our fire companies get about $1.1 million out of that funding. So, that's a breakdown of the major sources in there. Public Works, right top orange, is about 12%. That would really be from two sources mainly, roads, $8.5 million, and our engineering department at $1 million. And I think the $1 million is money well spent. You know, they do a lot of work in the county and get a lot of projects, take care of our roads, our bridges, our water sewers. So, they're doing a lot with the $1 million. Next one over to the right, general government's only 10%. And we're happy to keep that one as close to 10% as we can. The idea being, we want to put as many of our dollars to actual work as possible, instead of wasting them, not wasting them, but not utilizing them fully when happening. So, those are things like the Administrator's Office, Finance Office, Tax Office, State's Attorney, or Legal Department, any of the support services. And then you'll see the very bottom right, we've kind of just mentioned this just a little bit, economic development's less than a percent here. And a lot of people would sort of challenge us, is why are we spending so little out of our general fund on economic development? It's because our RBF fund is doing so well. We're generating positive revenue with our buildings. We're able to pay for that economic development operation outside of our general fund. So, we always like to point that out, just so people can see that we are putting effort into economic development. It's just, we're able to pay for it without using taxpayer dollars.
And Jason, how much does that revolving building fund generate each year?
So, on an annual basis, it's generating about $3.5 million. What we do every year is sort of put up the fund balance, so we have it all able to spend as we go.
Right.
So, it's a great revenue source for us. And obviously, the biggest piece of that would be the PPG FEMA building, which continues to do very well for us.
And of that 3.5, how much is usually unallocated that we could use for different?
Really, we're spending somewhere right around $1 million for operations. So, the rest is able to be used every year. We're generating positive revenue that's usable every year, that we've put to work for things like the Barton Park Building, which we paid cash for.
Very good.
So, we'll continue to try to do those kind of things. Next slide is just a little bit of a different breakdown on our expenditures from what we just looked at. All we're doing here is showing how our dollars are going out the door. So, you can see the big piece in blue there, very nearly 50% of our dollars are going right out the door in the form of appropriations. And you can see in the little circle on the left there, the breakdown of that. Obviously, Board of Ed at 30.7 million, Allegheny College, 7.7 million, Health Department, almost a million and a half, HRC at nearly a million, and the library, nearly at a million. So, a lot of our dollars directly out the door before we even start, and funds a lot of our area agencies. You can see top, well, actually, middle right, salaries and fringe, takes 33% of our budget. A lot of people would think that's a much bigger number. But for us, 33% has grown slightly, and that's completely because of what we've talked about before, EMS. Debt service, you can see down towards the bottom, is not quite 3%. And that's good. We've kept that in check very nicely. One thing we've got to work on, and this has been honestly about a 10-year trend, our capital outlay at 1.9% is pretty low. This is the easiest place to get money when you need to trim budgets, but it does come at a price. Sometimes you're not able to keep up with the things you need to be keeping up with, whether it be road trucks, bridges. We're doing the best we can, but that's a place where, in the future, if revenues grow, we need to put a little more focus into. So, this slide here, a little busy, and some of the numbers there are a little small. I feel an important slide, and one we've used for many, many years. A lot of people talk about county government and municipalities and duplication of services, and why do we have two? Well, we wanted to lay out all the things that we do that municipalities don't. And that's not meant to pick on the municipalities, but there's a distinct difference between the two. So, what you see here is a listing of all the services that the county has to provide that the municipalities don't. There's 26 listed here. It equates to 67% of our budget, or $62 million. And I certainly won't rattle through all of them, but some of the big ones. Education falls on the county to fund. So, your Board of Ed, Allegheny College. The detention center, that is required of the counties, not the municipalities. So, that's $7 million. 911, which used to be a shared service, is now fully owned by the county. So, we pay for that. The libraries are funded completely by the county. Our Health Department, Transit, Elections, State's Attorney, Fair, all items that we fund that municipalities don't. So, 2/3 of our service budget goes to those kind of services. The other third is covered by tax differential. And I won't take you into the great details of tax differential. But I will say, Frostburg and Cumberland residents, on average, save 14.5 cents on their tax bill. So, their rate is reduced from 97.5, down by an average of 14.5 cents to cover some of the duplicative services. And from tax differential, just so you know, on an annual basis, we at the county are giving up about $2.3 million of tax revenue. So, that's sort of the discount we're giving to municipal residents. Next one here, we've already touched on debt service just a little bit. I won't spend a ton of time on this. Our debt service, you can see, transfers $3.1 million. And I know our debt service goals are $3 million. We are right there. What's included in that is $862,000 that we were able to move over from our bond premium from last year. So, in reality, the general fund's paying less than $3.1 million. We're at $2.4 million. We're right in line where we need to be with debt. What we've done here is break down what that debt goes to pay for. So, you can see on the bottom, the Board of Ed obviously takes up the lion's share of this debt. And right now, for good reason, the debt that's sitting there is for Mountain Ridge High School and for Allegheny High School. So, two less-than-10-year-old high schools in the county. You can see public safety is about 20% of this debt service. That's largely because of the EMS radio system, communications upgrades we just did over the last couple of years. You can see tonight, some of the other sources we have there. We've got projects for the library, obviously, there's public works projects, roads and bridges, a little bit of money to help, and a little bit for general government. AC makes up another big chunk there at $327,000. A big piece of that would be the tech building that we just worked on.
And Jason, our latest bond issuance, was that 3.35? Did we borrow it up?
Yeah, yeah, 3.75.
3.75?
Yeah, a good rate. The rates are moving up now, so we timed that pretty well. And speaking of borrowing, typically, after the CIP presentation, we do a debt affordability presentation. Tonight, we decided to just roll it into this. We'll talk about it really briefly. It's all stuff we've largely talked about before. Right where we need to be with our debt, at $3 million a year, what we don't have right now is really room in our budget for more debt because of not being able to pay for debt service. So, under a current scenario, our next borrowing wouldn't line up until about 2027. So, that's seven years out. It's quite a little ways out. But that's the next time we can afford to borrow without going over the $3 million debt service goal. So, something we may have to revisit in the future, but with revenues being pretty stagnant, that's going to be difficult to do. The good thing is, most of the projects that Dan alluded to in the CIP are already funded from either PEGO, prior projects, or sort of some other one-time sources. So, we're in good shape for now. We'll have to watch this in the coming years to see how we can make this work. So, this slide here is also a little bit busy, but we always like to lay out the appropriations that we've done for Allegheny College of Maryland. So, what you can see here is a couple-year comparison. We'll really focus on the right-hand side, what we budgeted for this year. We actually budgeted a 1% increase for them in funding. It didn't meet their request, but it's the best we can do this year. You can see the bottom line is, down in the bottom right, 3.6% more spending per student. So, their enrollment's actually dipped ever so slightly, about 2%. And we're funding a little bit more. So, all in all, for the county, we are funding per student a little bit more than last year. And not included in here, I should mention, is the opportunity scholarships for Allegheny College. We give $360,000 a year out of the Rocky Gap Funds to the college. That's not counted here. That stays in the special revenue fund. So, same kind of slide as last one. This one's for the Board of Ed, and we've talked about this many, many times over the years. So, far right side on this one, county appropriation is up this year to $30.7 million. That's up $310,000 from last year, a 1% increase. And that's actually part of maintenance of effort. So, enrollment actually dipped just slightly by the maintenance of effort calculation. But we got caught in what we've talked about many times before, the education effort index. State of Maryland allows us to keep up with the moving average of the rest of the state. If you're not doing that, they'll move you there. So, us and, I believe, eight other counties got moved to that average this year. So, that was a 2.5% escalator. So, that's why, even though enrollment's down a little bit, our appropriation is up. You can see at the end of the day, same thing here, spending per student down on the bottom is actually up a half a percent from last year. So, we continue to at least move in the right direction here. And if I could, if you'll bear with me a minute, while we're talking, Board of Ed, this is a little bit FYI for you. We still do not have their audit. It was actually due to last October of 2018. They still are not complete. It's beginning to cause us some problems, and could cause us some bigger problems down the line. So, we are actually out of extensions with the State of Maryland. They only allowed us an extension through April 30th. So, as of today, we are really out of compliance with the State of Maryland and their guidelines. There's little we can do about it. The Board of Ed is a component unit of ours. Their audit gets sort of rolled into our audit, so we can't complete ours. Their audit gets sort of rolled into our audit, so we can't complete ours till they complete theirs.
Has there been any stated expectation for when that could be?
So what we're hearing is it could still be several weeks, so my guess at this point would be end of May at the absolute best, probably sometime into June, if not July at, at worst. So it's also, our single audit to, to the federal government was due at the end of March. There's no extensions on that, so any federal funding partners could at any time decide to withhold or stop funding us. No one has yet, but it's always a potential. We've also missed our bond disclosure deadlines, which was also March 31st. We put an extension out till the end of May. We, we'll have to do another one here soon, but the, soon, but the rating agencies are already asking for our audit, so they want to put that information out to the, the bond owners so that they can see what we're doing. So I'm just bringing that up just to make you aware. Nothing has formally happened yet, but there's plenty of bad things that could happen.
And, and the key is the, the board not getting this to us causes a whole nother chain of reactions that doesn't allow us to complete our functions away.
It does, and, and it's, it's also a time drain for us because we're doing multiple extensions with multiple agencies and continuing to correspond. We've got USDA asking for the audit. We've got various state entities asking for it. So just here to highlight that we are still waiting for it, and yeah, the sooner the better.
Great.
Hate to end on a sour note, but it's very important to talk about tonight. Not included in this budget just yet is the effects of the roof mill closure. So just nine days ago, we, we got the terrible news of the loss of 675 jobs. We know for sure, we collect about $310,000 a year in property tax from the mill. Now, that won't go away day one, but assuming the mill closes, that assessment's obviously going to go down pretty rapidly on this. What we're trying to analyze now is the impact we're going to see on income tax. We're, we're trying to get a grip on just how many employees that is and what the dollar effect is to the county. There's also another effect there. It's not just employees. We're looking at all the support services that weren't for so employees that are going to be affected, and we've all talked about it many times already, whether it be the logging industry, the trucking industry. There's multiple, multiple support services up there. They're all going to have an effect. So at this time, what we'd like to ask is, and just, if, if we go ahead and adopt the budget as we have it, and as we begin to get some of this information in, we're going to need to probably come back to you commissioners in the next month to two to three, and work on probably amending this budget and revising our revenue estimates down, obviously. So we'll, we'll watch this one closely. We're working to get these numbers as, as tight as we can get them, but we just, we don't know enough yet to, to make an informed decision on what to do. So we just ask, moving forward, just some caution, and any kind of new expenditures that might come up, we're really going to have to be careful for a while until we know the full effect.
Okay.
So where we go from here is, tonight was technically the first hearing on the preliminary budget. Next week, we'll have another hearing that'll simply be for public comment. Right after this meeting tonight, this entire document, along with some more detail, will be posted online. If anyone has any questions, by all means, they can call or email our office. We'll be happy to help them out. As of now, budget adoption's scheduled for May 30th, 2019, and I'd like to give a big thank you to specifically Amy Williams in our office for putting this together and help, keeping me straight with all the budget details as we've gone forward, and everyone in, in the finance office. So pretty busy time of year for us, and everyone just rolls up their sleeves and gets to work. So with that, I'll leave it to you guys for any questions you may have.
Great. Jason, thank you for all your work on this. This one was probably the toughest that I've been through in five years. And I'll say this, for anyone that's around government or works in government, 1.6% increase is pretty lean.
Pretty lean.
Um, there, you know, if, if you're keeping increases that low, there, there's not much room to maneuver. So I, I, I thank you, and, and I, I think that the budget reflects our values as best it can. You know, there's never a perfect budget, but this year, it was kind of, get it done, we'll get it by, and, and hopefully next year will be a little bit brighter outlook.
That's what we can certainly hope for. Yep, yep.
Nothing to add?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there any other public comment on the budget tonight? You will have at least one more opportunity on the 16th, and then final passage on May 30th. Okay. Moving to, on to our action agenda, we have fiscal 2020 Allegheny County Sanitary Commission rate recommendations. We have Director Paul Kale.
Deputy Commissioners, what we're asking tonight is you'll approve the rates recommended by the Allegheny County Sanitary District, and then adopt them as part of our FY20 budget, total county budget. What we do is, we work hard, we work on the budget. Myself, Adam Patterson, Jason Bennett, and Amy Williams worked hard to get the numbers, and then we sit down with the Allegheny County Sanitary District, which represents a good portion of the county, and we reviewed those rate increases that we, we requested, and they approved them. Material costs are going up. Our systems are aging, so we want to try to invest some money back into the, the systems. Last year was especially this past year, this current fiscal year. We're actually in the hole a little bit because of the extreme weather we've had this year. Rain creates a lot more cost for us, for treatment costs in the Cumberland and to Kaiser. Commissioner Murray probably sees that. Laval Sanitary District, the bills have been very high this year due to the rain. And unfortunately, how they do the calculation, it carries over to this year too, because they, they, it's based on a 12-month rolling flow, so you pay for that average. So we're asking that you approve those rates that we attached to the motion, and open to any questions. If you have any questions.
Is there any comments?
Paul, was unanimous by the sanitary commission to?
It was unanimous, yes.
Great. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Item number six is a RETSA agreement with Allegheny Coal and Land. Mr. Butler?
Commissioners, item number six is a direct response to the actions that you gentlemen took by passage of Code Home Rule Bill 3-18. That bill allowed for a, a number of amendments to the current RETSA arrangement to, to make them more compliant, or more in line with the city of Frostburg. And Commissioners, this is one of two that we are working on right now. So this is for your approval of a RETSA agreement with Allegheny Coal and Land Company for a residential development in some of their infrastructure costs that, that are being taken there in Frostburg. So we're looking for, with your signatures tonight, a, a better arrangement so that we can start some residential development in the city of Frostburg. I would also say that, again, there's another RETSA agreement out there that, that is being worked on currently, and I think we'll have another one before you very, very shortly. Would also like to thank my partner in crime here, Mr. Rudd, for, for his work on this as well.
Great. And Commissioner Brody, thank you for working on this for how long?
Yeah, two, two years.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioners, I also would be remiss in saying that Frostburg has already taken action on this one, so this is just following their lead.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Butler?
Commissioners, there are a number of items on the consent agenda. Here we go. Item number seven is Laval Sanitary Commission Board Appointment. Item number eight is the Allegheny County Department of Social Services Board Appointments. Item number nine is a replacement of Bridges Contract Award. Item number 10 and 11 are surplus real property and surplus property declarations. Item number 12 is a budget amendment for the Western Maryland Seenic Railroad. Item number 13, 14, and 15 and 16, excuse me, are all items regarding various appropriations to the community promotions account. And finally, item number 17 is the 2019 ICSC, International Council on Shopping Centers Retail Convention, to authorize the travel of Delegate Jason Buckle to attend that in Las, Las Vegas, Nevada. I would add, Commissioners, that, that the Katie Nash of Greenwill Consulting will also, looks like they'll be attending, or she'll be attending as well, and, and that is under a contract where there is a reimbursement that we make to Greenwill.
Yes.
Commissioner Shade, I'd like to be heard to ask you to withdraw on that last item of consent. If I can.
If, if you would like.
Oh, good luck. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So at about 5:00 this evening, I got a text from a friend of mine with an article from our esteemed friends here in the local media from WCBC from information that could only have been provided by individuals in this room associated with the county, that suggested that county may fund Vegas convention junket for Delegate Buckle. And it said that the estimated cost, according to a source, for Buckle and one other person is around $10,000. Indications are that while Commissioners Jake Shade and Dave Capreri will vote to approve the authorization, Commissioner Creed Brody has some concerns and will vote no, which is certainly your card. That is, as a good friend of mine in the House of Delegates in Carroll County says, poppycock, poppycock. So I'd like to set the record straight publicly, because that's the way I like to do things. I have a significant and extreme concern that I've expressed to each, not, barely not to Mr. Rudd, but each of the four of you, that I believe that economic development in Allegheny County over the five years that I've been in office representing this county is poor, is extremely poor. We sat here tonight, and we heard from Mr. Bennett discussing the 675 lost jobs. I spent about three hours today, Senator Edwards, Delegate Biteson, and I, meeting with the union officials and many of the workers from that facility, trying desperately to figure out a way to help them. And the best way that I can think of, quite honestly, to help them and help their families is to bring more things to Allegheny County. Bring more jobs, bring more attractions, bring more development. The best thing, as I sat and listened to Mr. Bennett, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, talk about your incredibly declining revenues, your real property tax declining revenues, is because you need things to be built here to increase your real property tax base. The convention in Las Vegas was brought to my attention, and I don't care if it's in Las Vegas, or Charleston, West Virginia, or Louisville, Kentucky, or in Lona Coating. That's not the point of it. The convention was brought to my attention in connection with my responsibilities as the Allegheny County Delegation Chair to the House of Delegates several months ago. I brought it to the attention of your paid outside economic consultant, Ms. Nash and Mr. Lanier and Greenwill, who do a wonderful job trying to find opportunities to bring entities, whether they be real estate development, job creators, whatever it may be here in Allegheny County. I brought that to their attention and said, I was contacted directly by the Maryland chapter of folks who are part of this organization, and they suggested that it is often and frequently a good idea for the state representatives to go, because many of the incentives and the other things that these folks are looking to, to come as a result of are more state. I sat here tonight for a good hour. I suggest to you that a huge proportion of your budget, millions, tens of millions of dollars of your intended budget, comes not from the Allegheny County taxpayer, or not from the Allegheny County offices within this building, but seems to come from the state of Maryland. To defer and not try to butt my nose into all of these millions and millions of dollars in state monies that are flowing to Allegheny County. I'll probably take a different perception on this going forward. I was asked to attend said event. My understanding is that Administrator Butler went to a similar event in New York City last year with Ms. Nash and Mr. Lanier and Kurt Kost, and went and did that, and found it to be somewhat productive, and felt that it was something that would need to be continued to develop connections with these folks. I, let's make sure WCBC gets this, I had already indicated to Mr. Butler, to Ms. Nash, to Commissioner Shade, I'm paying for myself to stay in a hotel out there. I'm paying for everything for myself. What I suggested is, is that the cost of the convention itself is $820, and that there's a flight. I asked and was told three months ago, shouldn't be a problem, we'll line up the flight. It was fairly, fairly low cost, so I didn't line it up. Two days ago, I was told, pay for the flight yourself, and we think we'll be able to get it reimbursed. I paid for the flight myself. It's a little less than $900, 850 bucks. Total cost, write this down, Mr. Gallants, total cost, $1,600. I don't know where anybody's getting $10,000. I don't know where you got that from. I'm sure I'll find out when we're done this meeting where you got it from. But not $10,000, $1,600. My understanding is, is certainly because of some, some terrible and some tragic circumstances that have occurred locally and, and in your office, you don't really have much of an economic development department right now. The, the, the lead individuals of that are out and certainly are unable to go. So my participation in this was simply to go, because we're supposed to be on the same team, not on different teams. We're supposed to go and try to get real estate, shopping centers, property, biotech, cyber. We're supposed to be working together to get these people to come here, not you do it, or I do it, we don't do it. That's not how this is supposed to work. That seems to be the way that, that, that there seems to be some suggestion of how it will work. I don't really care. I told Ms. Nash three days ago, why doesn't Mr. Butler go? He doesn't want to go. I asked Mr. Capreri, who's one of my lifelong closest friends, how many weeks ago, Mr. Capreri? Several weeks ago. Dave, do you want to go? I think somebody should go. My concern is very simple and very fundamental. You want to stop what we're seeing, 675 jobs lost, coal lost, this lost, that's lost? We aren't going to solve it inside this building in Kelly Road. You're going to have to put your ties on, you're going to have to get on a plane, or get in a car, you're going to have to leave dozens of times, hundreds of times, and you're going to have to sell what Allegheny County has to offer to people who aren't here today who might want to move here. You don't want me to do it? That's fine. I'm going to do it anyway. God has blessed me enough, I can afford to do it. I'm going to go on my own dime. I want you to take the reimbursement off. I'll pay for my own dime to go, and I'll do, I'll do my own thing. Now, now, it won't work as well. We won't be coordinated or consolidated, but I'll go out, and I'll meet with cabinet secretaries, and I'll meet with people from other entities, and I'll try to discuss what Allegheny can or can't do, not as part of a consolidated effort where we have the same information, because apparently that's a problem. I am offended, I am upset, that someone in this room would leak this type of information at 5:00 tonight to the media in an obvious attempt to besmirch me. That's obviously what it is. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Please remove that from your consent agenda. I don't want a dollar of your money. Bye.
Okay.
Very good. Well, sir, I do have to ask item five be removed from the Laval Sanitary Commission, or not removed, but segregated out.
All right. Well, let's, 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 let's do this. Let's take item number seven first.
Or, yes.
Item number seven of the consent agenda, that's Laval Commission Board Appointments.
Yes.
And I'll make the motion, we appoint Mr. William J. George to the Laval Sanitary Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just for the record, I recuse, because I'm an employee there.
You abstain.
Yes.
All right. Now, let, let's take item number eight through 16 on the consent. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let, let's go back to, to item number 17 here. You know, we, we keep talking about, what's the future of Allegheny County? Are we going to sit here and wait for a Kelly Springfield, Salini, PPG to show up? Are we going to do it sitting here in Cumberland, Maryland? I don't think we are. I, I think we need to go out and try to attract businesses. That's really why we hired Greenwill Consulting to do that, and, and they're doing a wonderful job. You know, we, we, we took a little bit of blowback from, from going into a $98,000 contract with them, but guess what? That's the all-inclusive price. That, you know, it, it's hard to get someone of, of senior quality that's going to go out and recruit businesses and travel around and pay them insurance and benefits and everything else that goes with that for $98,000. They're doing it. They brought in leads. It, it's definitely been a great decision. And, and I'll say this, I, I've sat here for five years, and from the very first meeting, when I walked in the door, we talked about, what are the goals for economic development? And I got a dirty secret. There's not any. There's none. You asked today, how many jobs are we trying to bring in each quarter, each month, each year? Can't tell you. Can't tell you. Other departments don't work like that. Director Bennett has a timeline. Director Kale has a timeline. Mr. Rudd has a timeline. Economic development doesn't work like that. So we went out and got Thomas P. Miller and Associates, a company out of Indiana, paid them a lot of money, and they're creating a strategic plan from it for us. And part of their recommendations are go into these events, go into these conferences where there's site selectors, where there's people that, that can make things happen, where there's site selectors, where there's people that can make things happen, that want to do deals, that want to create commerce, and that want to make progress on economic development. And it's not out of the goodness of their heart, it's because they think they can make money. But if we're not at the table, it's not gonna happen. And so, for many, many years, this conference in Las Vegas is, it's the premier, they call it the Super Bowl, you can Google that, but they call it the Super Bowl, ICSC. And Maryland sends a huge delegation every year, Allegheny County has never sent anyone. I wasn't even aware of it last year until Greenwell Consulting brought it up. So, you know, and to the other point, and maybe the public doesn't know this, you could put everyone that works full-time in economic development in Allegheny County, city, Frostburg, here, Frostburg State, you could put them in the front row of seats, that's all there is, there's not some huge staff. So, when we talk about, well, who's gonna go, who's gonna do this, who's gonna do that, it's hard for me to think of someone better than someone who's a senior member of the Ways and Means Committee that knows the tax writing code, that knows all of the economic development incentives that have got things passed, no, they're not a county employee. But, do we work with them every day? Yes, absolutely. So, that's the background of this. This stuff about $10,000, that's a political hit job. It's insulting, it's completely untrue. It's less than $1,700. We talked about our revolving building fund, where's that money come from? That comes from businesses paying rent to be used for economic development. That's where it comes, it's not coming out of the general fund, it's not coming out of the fund we have trouble with, it comes from the fund that is growing every year, and we have that money to use for economic development. So, for me, I think this is a no-brainer. If they wouldn't, if they don't want to accept the reimbursement, that's fine, but I'm still moving forward on this, I'm gonna make the motion that we accept item number 17 for reimbursement, to authorize the travel. I don't expect it to be more than $1,700 a year, for this year. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Gentlemen, we just voted to spend over $1,700 on the wing-off, on the Cosse Wine Festival, on the ox roast for ad, and the Allegheny Garrett Volunteer Fire Association Convention. So, with that, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve item number 17.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
I apologize, everyone up here, you know, I believe, thought we had this discussion, I apologize to Delegate Buckle, we had this laid out, we discussed it, we covered everything for the various reasons that Commissioner Shade had stated. Someone feels against that, that's fine, we'll vote and move on to the next issue.
Well, there's been a couple issues, and I'm not gonna get into this, because I've been beat up over the years for not economic development, every business that come in here have been berated and told it's not economic development. I can still remember the day Cracker Barrel opened at roughly a four-and-a-half million dollar asset to the county with 140 employees, I was told that's not economic development. And I'm not getting into all that here tonight, but the good thing is, there is actually several local people, developers, it's going out to this conference, I know it's going there, they're going, because their goal is to bring people back, because they make money, their livelihood depends on bringing stuff to Allegheny County.
And I would say, even, even, you know, with the events, and Luke, there's reason for optimism, there's a lot of good stuff going on, there's a lot of good things we're working on, and we're gonna continue to do that. I think structurally, economic development is getting on the right track.
Right.
And I think the fact that we had not had a presence at this particular event before, even push for that even more. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Gentlemen, there will be no hard feelings, not with between the three of us.
Not at all.
Not at all, sir.
Only hard feelings. Mr. Rudd?
Thanks a lot. I have nothing.
Mr. Butler?
Nothing.
Mr. Caparelli?
Nothing else to add, thank you.
Mr. Brody?
Nothing, sir, for the constrained times, I want Charlie Gobles to be able to speak this evening.
Mr. Gobles, please.
Well, I tell you, you guys have a tough job. I don't want to sound political, and I just want to say this, I will follow the news religiously, and I hope you don't mind, but President Trump is doing a phenomenal job. I pass Florida town Ohio every time I go to see my son, and they lost, what, 1,800 jobs? Who's called President Trump and told him of our problem here at Wesco? Who picked up the phone? We had Democrats come out here and say, oh, it's so important, because our governor has bedmoofed the president so much, that unless someone gets on the horn and talks to him and say, look, we've got a bad situation, we don't have 600 and some jobs.